Welcome to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, who's that you're saying?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Grimmer?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
I'm here.
Who's that? Mr. Law of the present? Mr. Cosley?
Here.
Mr. Owens is here. Mr. Avantini is here, DCID planning. Alright, so, um, we have, I don't know how you want to do this, we have two sets of minutes. We have our regular meeting come October 6th and then our special meeting that'll be out on October 19th. So, if you'd be of your pleasure, if you want to approve both of those together or if you want to do them separately.
I think we'll squeeze the minutes of the regular meeting about October 6th and the special meeting about October 19th.
No more. Questions or comments, concerns on that? All favor of approving both of those minutes? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion to approve our agenda for this evening, please?
Certainly.
Second.
Do you think we need to address things a little bit? All favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Alright, so, um, public comments. Uh, just so that everyone knows, as we are, we're gonna open a, uh, a public hearing in a little bit for the master plan. So, uh, if you want to have a little bit more time to talk about the master plan, um, we'll have that there. But, uh, anything else that you'd like to share with us with on your mind, you can over here comment.
... grant. And about to, in private, I'll be, tomorrow at 11 o'clock in the morning, we're going to go, uh, the library's received a $6,000 grant from Summer Synergy. And Yolanda Lewis attended for a photo opportunity. And I just thought it'd be great if we had some of our public officials in one of the teams home, and drive in. Kind of a celebration, it's one of the first grants that we've kind of, you know, uh, uh, we got. And the next thing we're waiting for, any minute, we're going to hear from UTE. And Yolanda told us, I worked at UTE too, you need to ask her out for money, here's Raj's name and phone number.
Good. Have the log ready, done?
Yes.
And then?
Love in the end of the line.
Eleven o'clock.
Any other comments? So, move to our new business, we have a site plan to review for display pack at, uh, 6, 6-0 West Street. So, we have a motion to approve that, so we can, you know, discussion on it?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Avantini, would you walk us through your letter?
Thank you, Jimmy. And the revised letter, and we're gonna second that, and state that number six. Time to say that you don't care about our best plans. Changes that were made were subtle, and a little bit too oriented, and, uh, the applicant has a impression that he could not afford any of that stuff, so. You know, most of what I'm talking about here is, uh, straightforward. One of the first items that we need to write is the sign, and there's not consolidation, it's a piece of copy here. Let's maybe get with, uh, two, four projects here. It's, uh, it smells slower than a saltwater, and it's consolidated with the rear parcel, obviously, you know, separate parcel, yeah. And also, um, they indicated that this portion of the site, um, did its sound smell to a residential residential, really, like, you know, idea to choose it over to a rest of the, uh, the rest of the site at some point in time. In terms of the national requirements to the ordinance, everything that we need, um, we didn't see was the lot coverage, um, requirement, but it's not, they, they probably need the lot coverage requirement. In terms of eye volume, it's just, you know, that they have theirs. They think that the parking, uh, there, there's more than enough parking spaces, uh, in the prior, when the ordinance, they want to obviously ensure that they're providing, uh, technical power and quality, and then reduce your overall, uh, people. The ordinance also requires that all the mountains give sidewalks, um, on both sides of the public car, the streets, every landowner sidewalks in the area, those, uh, there's no, uh, that, uh, thing. Uh, interior sidewalks, no change, uh, but even a, for the side plane is, where you have sidewalks that are about the purpose cases, and the seven feet wide, so five to pound maybe a little over them, or two feet, so there's, uh, another two feet wide, uh, for those. Um, they've submitted a landscape plan that doesn't work out with the ordinance, and they indicated in their letter that they are requesting a lesser amount of plannings, and they can present their, uh, that discussion and their reasoning, um, when, uh, come up to the podium there. Uh, the building addition, uh, it's an attractive addition that has quite a variety of materials, and, uh, changes to the elevation, and architects here, uh, we, uh, we worked at that, think, uh, think it's an attractive design with, uh, hill high wall and parents to it. Uh, even though it's not going to be highly visible, it will be to people visiting. And, um, so we did build it at the same time of the ordinance, and we just asked them to bring along some material samples, so we can, uh, do, uh, exactly what they, uh, what they're planning on using. Uh, the plans to mitigate use of either rooftop or ground mounted mechanical units, they're probably going to use them, one or the other, and regardless of which one they use, they're gonna need to make sure that they're screened to ground level. Uh, and we, they really pushed this quickly to get the plans in, and revised the plans, and, and they didn't have enough time to do the lighting plan. But as indicated in the letter, that's something that they submitted, you know, after the fact. If you're okay with that, we can clearly, you know, review that administratively, to make sure these ordinance requirements. And then obviously, there's other department, uh, and agency reviews, and I don't like, I'll bear a hunch to take a look if that's, they weren't communication with them. So, without a lot, we are looking for approval of the site plan, uh, request for display pack condition, how the value is. Number one, the lot to be gifted from the city of Cedar Springs must be consolidated with parent parcel. Number two, lot coverage information being provided. Number three, later of the sidewalk requirement along West Street. Number four, the width of the sidewalk accompanying the spaces on the north side of the parking lot must be increased from five, from five feet to seven feet. Uh, number five, planning commission acceptance of the material samples for the proposed building addition. Uh, number six, the screening of any rooftop or ground mounted mechanical units. Uh, number seven, submission of a lighting plan for administrative review and approval. And number eight, review and approval from other, like, both departments, and, uh, which is the decision. So, if you have any other questions, that are kind of tough, because you're putting up the, the previous plan, it didn't have all the landscaping, and didn't have the curving around the parking lot. So, there are some things that, that will be shown on the plan that you didn't see, um, but if you have other questions, uh, in advance, we'll get them on the, uh. And they did remove the detention, on the detention basis, uh, from, that you're seeing on your plan. So, then right next to the parking lot is the only one that they're putting out.
So, have you seen the material samples?
I now have.
Oh, okay.
And then what about the, um, the zoning, uh, the, uh, the zoning?
You know, it's kind of requirement, because they're not touching that, uh, that part of the property, um, but, you know, anything that's not going to hurt, but it's, uh, in the future, they're gonna look at, you know, and, uh, just to make sure that it matches up with the rest of, uh, the, uh, side of that.
Modern technology, it's not like it's hard here. I think the one that they're, uh, just, uh, by my book's side. Guys, you wanna walk us through some of the changes you have?
Mr. Chair, my name is Speedway Nitterbell, here tonight on plenty of the site display pack. Uh, with the attendance tonight is Jim Ryer from Wolverine Building Group, as a general contractor for the project, as well as Dan Henderson, who from Henderson Architecture, the Architector Project. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your time consideration, and our request, especially, I'd like to thank Carmen, Mike Bearboots, Thad, and Linda for their assistance in this. Uh, this has been really fast track, and I really appreciate that from a timing standpoint, to the city and primarily their staff. Um, as Carmen indicated, we've kind of been scrambling to get all this done, so I feel like you don't have maybe the current plans in front of you, but, uh, the way that this work, as I submitted plans to the city, uh, Carmen reviewed it, did an initial review of it, I addressed his items, and then we did have a couple of minor changes that Display Pack wanted, and then we resubmitted it. Carmen wrote a letter, a review letter that I think you guys have, that he went over just a second ago, and I've actually addressed those items as well, so I can walk you through that if you'd like to. Just back up a step, uh, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the property, uh, the previous Wolverine Worldwide Distribution Center, Display Pack purchased the building. And what they're proposing to do is an 8,000 square foot build, a building addition on the south end of the building. With that, uh, they're proposing to add, uh, or construct 180 parking spaces, I think the plan you had might have around 140. That was one of the changes that Display Pack asked for, and basically what it is, the iteration is the same, but we're just a little bit closer to the building. Um, they have approximately, um, 180 to 225 employees at the site that have been given time, but they really felt that adding that approximately 40 more parking spaces would really be beneficial to them. In addition to the parking lot, they are proposing another, a new, uh, truck drive entrance a little bit further to the north. Uh, that's through an area that previously was stormwater holding area, but it no longer is a stormwater holding area, and I'll talk about that in just a second. Um, from a utility standpoint, uh, as I just mentioned, um, stormwater from the site, there's actually a regional stormwater holding area that's west of the buildings. That handled the existing site, but in fact, in the mind of Bearboots, he had indicated that he wasn't certain if the new hard surface was already accommodated in that existing stormwater holding area, so we are providing, uh, stormwater holding area at the southwest corner of the site that would accommodate everything that's due. So, he has reviewed that, he has indicated that that's acceptable, um, another side, don't have to worry with the details, there's actually a 36-inch storm sewer that runs where the addition is going to go. We're rerouting that around the addition. Related to that, there's, as well, we have, there's also water main that goes where the building addition is gonna go, so we are also rerouting that around the building addition, and we'll get the proper permission approvals for that work as well. Standard here standpoint, that's, uh, very simple, or extent, we're taking that from the existing building. Um, as Carmen indicated, the plans that I have with me tonight, that I can show you in more detail, we've had to add quite a bit more landscaping to get up to what the ordinance requires for this site. Uh, the ordinance actually bases it on the number of parking spaces provided, so for this, we're showing 36 trees and 108 shrubs. Um, Display Pack is okay with that, but they really feel that that's an overkill, uh, I can print this for you closer, but if you look kind of, uh, the, the, the round gear, I guess, uh, you can see that there's quite a few plantings there, um, so if there is any possibility to reduce that requirement, Display Pack would really appreciate that. Building standpoint, it's a very attractive building, it's considered primarily a brick, block, and windows, I don't believe we brought sample boards unfortunately, but we did bring a very nice, uh, very detailed rendering that, um, I'll let Dan go over if you'd like to. Uh, he can maybe, maybe a little bit better feel for what it can look like, it's an extremely attractive building. If you're familiar with the existing building, the shelter, quite frankly, is just kind of Mel's, I think, this is probably way better than that, um, and this is where their offices are going to be, so they really want to dress that up and make that look nice. Um, as I indicated, I did, uh, get Carmen's, well, recent review letters, and I guess I'll maybe just kind of briefly go through those, uh, just to assure you, uh, in the city, that those will be accommodated. Um, I did add a note to my plan I brought tonight, and Carmen has not yet seen it, but I did add a note saying that the property will be consolidated. Um, and then I also added a note that, um, a reason would be sought for that sliver of property that still owns our three. I did modify a little bit for the sidewalks that are adjacent to the parking spaces to be seven feet wide instead of five feet wide. In Carmen's letter, you had, I said the north end of the parking lot, which is true, but there's also parking on the east end, so I added that on the east end, I also also show it seven feet wide as well. So, I want to point that out to you. Um, I added a note on the site plan saying that the paneling units will be rooftop units, and that they will be screened for a series of feeder springs requirements, there will be no ground units. Uh, and then I also added a few note on the construction plans that basically just kind of reiterated, uh, a couple of things that was in Mike's review letters, like the, uh, permits needed for the water main, and, uh, storm sewers will be constructed prior to disconnecting the existing one, and stuff like that. Um, as Carmen indicated, uh, we don't have a geometric plan, we couldn't quite pull that together in time, but, uh, we'd be more than happy to, to share that with Carmen and whoever else in the city we need to approve that. And I guess the last thing that I, I, I noted was that 40% lot coverage, and, um, I, quite frankly, with, with, I'm not sure exactly what Display Pack is purchasing from the city, there's a sliver piece, but then there's also options on some other property. So, the best I can tell right now is the existing site excluding anything south of that gravel drive, is that about 40.5%? But the way I look at it is that sliver that is going to be gifted from the city over to Display Pack, that property, that sliver property actually is 27,580 square feet. If you take 40% of that 25,580 square feet, that would allow for a building addition of just over 11,000 square feet, and we're at 8,000 square feet. So, we're, that land that we're adding is, makes it less non-conforming, if it is non-conforming, if that makes sense, I resent that, but I, I, quite frankly, I'm a little struggling, because I heard that they bought, uh, some of the, uh, the other properties there, but I'm not sure exactly what they have bought. Uh, but I, I do know for certain it can be less non-conforming than it is right now, if that makes sense, so.
Excuse me, is that for the building, it's worth something, sitting right around 40% of the building?
Correct, for the existing building and then the addition, it's like at 40.5, the best I can see right now, but that's not including any land to the south, and that's not including the, uh, the, you know, we're hope never property, so I mean, it's right there, but then, like I said, the way I look at it is they're adding, for sure, I know they're adding the 27,580 square feet. And then 40% of that would actually allow them an 11,000 square foot addition, or 8,000, we're not making worse, if you're following, uh, the process there. Uh, so, that being said, I've kind of rambled on, I'd be more than happy to go through more of the details on the plan, I realize you guys don't have that in front of you, uh, necessarily right now, but, uh, any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to answer that. Um, if you have any questions on the Architector's side of it, or if you want to take a closer look at that, um, I can bring that up, and Dan can talk to you about the Architector's side of it, but it is a, a very attractive building, so, that being said, it, once again, I really appreciate your time on this, thanks.
Um, you were requesting reducing the plantings to, to what, do you have a number in mind?
Not, not really, um, they just said it seems like a lot of plantings, so we can get it reduced, and I said, well, you know, it's what the ordinance requires, and then they said, well, if we could get it reduced, that would be nice, but we, I never quite trying to talk to them about doing, you know, instead of 36 trees, doing 25 trees or something like that, you know, we never talked it, or settled on a specific number, is that something we can do administratively?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it does, I think the spacing is really tight also, I mean, there, I'm looking for, what, about 30?
Yeah.
It's about to be at least 40, you know, so. Um, actually, what, maybe what we could do is, um, take out some of the trees along there, space them out more, and maybe, uh, do something else in terms of grasses and some landscaping, because we don't know what the detention basin's gonna look like, there's no requirement unless you're abiding a residential district, but maybe the trade office could do some, um, you know, some grasses and maybe some shrubs around the detention basin, which, for them, it's a plus, and I think, in terms of the overall appearance, would look a lot nicer that way, too.
And they want it to look nice, too, I mean, they just saw all the plantings, they're like, oh, man, it's a lot, and so.
I think you may not know this answer, but for future expansions on this site, is there, I know, have they secured another 6 acres, state's office?
6.4.
Oh, yeah, the number 5 for the lot coverage side of it.
But, but it's not contiguous to this property, because it's separated by that?
Oh.
Gravel road that goes back to wastewater field.
Okay.
If there's further expansion to the south, onto that, we relocate the road, and the trees will be.
Yep. Yeah, the only addition that I've heard them talk about possibly is actually a, a little addition here. And that's why, if you look at our, our utility plan, we're actually starting the rerouting of the water main and the storm sewer way over here, and the coal's coming over here. So, we figured we'd do that now, and set them up, so that if they did want to, basically double the size of this office area, they have some room to do that without having to move utilities. But yeah, long range, coming here from now, they might want to do a lot more work.
You know those plantings, coming that's, either supposed to be there, um, it's a parking lot, and you need to push snow somewhere? And I've seen different places in town where we've had parking lots, and they've had, uh, the shrubs in it, and they just get rolled over, so.
Well, we can, you know, that's something we can talk about, when we're doing your overall, you know, the landscape planning, where it's located, where you're pushing stuff, that sort of thing, because that's a good point, um, even though we're not supposed to get snow this way.
Any other question?
Do you know if color is a brick and a rock sign, is it similar to?
Well, you know, yeah, we apologize, we didn't, we don't know where, we were, you know, we didn't raise that, so, I'm concerned about this.
I didn't know if it was similar to the picture.
It is. Yes, I'm sure.
I mean, that's been all just walk this around, give a close view of it.
Gray, that's been nothing.
That's locked?
Yes, my name's Dan Henderson, and, uh, here, I'm thinking of project. Yeah, there's, uh, several materials we're using now, they want a real clean, crisp, uh, front door to the facility, knowing that the building itself right now is really single, and, uh, I don't want to, it's not a lot of built, some tech, or two, uh, there's not a lot to it, and so, we're, we're creating the front door, the image for them. Um, and so we have a, uh, combination of smooth face and, and, you know, hook based block, of, uh, kind of medium dark gray, and then we use the glass itself as a dark reflective bluey spray, and then we have clear anodized bands that run horizontally, as you can see.
Yeah, two small ones.
Um, and then we have, uh, some, uh, metal panel at the top, that'll have a little bit of shine to it, as you can see, and that provides a slot that can overhang pretty, so we actually have a couple green roofs up there, too, so, more of a gesture than actually a, a green, you know. And then there's also the ability to expand the, the facility at some point, if they, if standard office environment, first things here, I want to make one correction, it was 8,000 square feet on the main level, there's an additional 6,000 square feet on, so it's a total of 14,000 square feet. That's all I have to say, if you have any questions.
Right. Yes. Um, the increase in the perking lots, I mean, kind of, does that have an impact on this, is that increasing the amount of grass area, increasing by 40 spaces, does that make?
We're increasing it, 40 spaces from the plan that I think you guys have, uh, because I think when I submitted it, we were talking 140, 135, and now we're at 180.
Is that too much, and that, I'm giving us enough green spaces, is that enough for the amount of employees they're talking about?
Yeah, I think the key with, with an industrial site like this is how they're handling their stormwater, which is what might, you know, be involved in, uh, in, in terms of the, you know, the amount, and for an industrial site, um, as long as they're being, and they're, they're quite close enough today, as long as they're being, um, the lot coverage requirement, I, they're, they're fine, it's not like it's, you know, right up on Main Street, they're setting the highway, you're gonna have a ton of traffic going through there, it's, or you have to be, it's, it's still gonna be an attractive, um, you know, with the landscaping and the parking lot condition and all, it's still gonna be an attractive project. Um, but we're not, you know, from that perspective, we're not in a place, compared to, really be a part of a commercial development, or, or, or something like that, so as long as they need ordinance requirements and they're handling their stormwater, I, you know, we're there with that.
But what I've seen personally is, you know, businesses don't want to, in general, spend money, so if they don't need the parking, they're not gonna put it in, where, so they, they know their needs better than their zoning ordinance does, better than I do, better than Carmen, you know, better than all of us. And then, once again, when that first plan that I submitted, when they saw the 140, they're like, ooh, we really need more than that, so, so it's kind of, kind of taking them at their word, because they're, they're not gonna want to spend money to construct spaces that they're not gonna need and use, so.
I guess I was more concerned about the fact that, is there a not full thing?
Yeah.
Because you're talking potential 200 and some employees.
Well, there is parking on the north end of the site, too, so there's 180 new spaces, but on the north end, there's 100 or so spaces, now that parking, I think they share with, um, I was pretty soon, Hope never, or whatever, so there is some back and forth there, but they just take, uh, Display Pack did take a close look at the number of parking spaces that are provided, and they said this is sufficient for their needs.
I think everybody knows this, maybe, uh, um, kind of say, but they are taking the building, they're just gonna be going from mostly warehouse to manufacturing, they are bringing, so this won't be just a warehousing and distribution center anymore, they're bringing manufacturing up here. Maybe everybody already knows that, but that's really the need for all the spaces, I mean, they're gonna have a lot more bodies, and that square footage is gonna work for them.
On your proposed, uh, detention basin, what would be the depth of that, or, of course, I have plans, but I'm sure that I know the other one.
I think it's about, well, it's about, let's say, 4 and a half feet, it's the same depth. But the north one, right away, when, when I did the north one, I actually just showed the area of it, and that was actually before Mike told me that regional detention had already been provided, so if that did, it'll allow me to get rid of that one altogether.
Well, basically, your southern one is more or less a, a perch, or culvert area than full.
Yes, well, this is, it is, it, it, all of this water ends up in here, and then my flow, or my restriction is actually here, that connects to the 36-inch pipe that goes out to the regional basin.
Yeah, there's a regional.
But all of the concrete surface ends up here first, and then is detained.
And our print show the proposed detention.
Correct, yours got the original ones, yours is outdated, so.
This one only, not that.
Like, I'll tell you the day, the day after I submitted it, it was outdated, and so.
Alright, any other questions, please? Okay, so, um.
Okay, the, uh, the, the, you want to, uh, modify that a little bit, some of the conditions that we're using here?
So, they covered everything except the landscaping.
So, it's, it's, uh, about that here in the administrative, if we.
Should we get the lighting off, so, right, uh, way, uh? Well, if, if, Mr. Chairman, if I have a recommendation, if you could, if you were to cite the, the, um, the conditions in the, um, the study letter dated November 6th, except for, and just take out the ones that they've already addressed, that would probably suffice.
Is it one person, that they're being done and added?
Yeah, that they were addressed adequately, and the, and that the, and that the other remaining lines will be handled in a strategic condition.
So, number one would go away, two would go away, three, yeah.
If you haven't seen it yet, right?
Well, you're, you're, you're okaying it, I, it's, uh, it's actually, actually you could take it up, because if you're approving it, you'd take that up.
And then, then the four.
So, the only thing we have is the, um, acceptance of the material samples, if it ever be done administratively?
Yeah, you know.
And the lighting?
Yeah, the lighting, actually, if, you have the lighting.
Lighting, lighting, you're stopping. Okay, you're ready to decide on the landscaping?
Yeah, you're up here, that I would work with them on taking some of those out, doing something different around the detention basin, and talk them a little more, and you want to do something higher.
Is that, is that alright?
I assume it's still the remaining mechanical there.
Yeah, we said, Mr. Chairman, we just didn't have time to, there's more things we could talk about, and, and, uh, just, I'm, there are a lot of secrets.
Oh, I knew that we approved the site plan, request for display pack condition on the, um, following items of the letter, November 6th, except, accepting number 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and that the landscaping will be handled administratively. And we have the submission of the lighting plan for administrative review and approval, and the planning commission, uh, well, the acceptance of the, um, material samples will be done administratively. Does that make sense? You got that, Linda?
Alright, so, it's a motion.
I think this is, uh, first thing.
Good. All, all favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright.
Thank you, all very much, you.
Alright, I'd say I'm on a new business. Plan unit development pre-application. Counting forward to the site, the proposed projects for community building development team and library. Mr. Chairman, just an overview of the process here tonight. We talked about it at a previous meeting. Plan permission first, for the applicant to present the information regarding the development. And also talk about the stuff anything that will changes to it before they make their final submission. I, it's my understanding, at least I guess it's kind of that I will be preparing the P U D application for them. And so I'm going to be gleaning from comments, the things that say like information that I can use in the actual application to look at and report on. And once again, in the process of the ordinance, also for pre-application and then further the public hearing. We're trying to, to gather the rezoning for the properties that aren't zoned currently zoned for, I'm trying to be, or is it getting rid of that? And decided to go with the P U D. And so we're going to have one public hearing to hopefully one review process. So they're tied together. But it will be, some of the other lines will really be changed and then the whole property will be changed when we get it out. So that, that's the process we're going through. And there are folks here from the C B D T and the library for us to discuss that. One thing I would like to go over, just overall, in terms of the information that's submitted in the plan. I know there's some discussion it's going to take was about what properties are actually going to be included in the submission. Because there are a couple of other pieces included that we hadn't heard about until most recently when the plan was submitted. So I think that's something that needs to be discussed. And maybe that is more to say about that. But in terms of the overall plan that you've submitted, in terms of the review of it, I'm very supportive of the overall plan. It's got a nice nature of public uses. It'd be a real asset to the community. So overall, I think it's going to be a great project and looking forward to doing the application. One concern that I expressed under, with from a previous letter dated August 6th. Still concerned about the orientation of the library building, obviously. This is a transition zone into the downtown. And both ends of the downtown area can be careful. We don't expect folks to be putting up multi-level buildings that necessarily have the same character and feel as the downtown. But we also want to make sure that we're at least ameliorating some of the features leading into downtown. I know when we spoke with the representatives on the committee previously, they indicated they wanted angle in park to maintain the view at the corner of the trail. Obviously, the trail's quite a distance away, but they could still keep the park at the corner and maintain that view and turn the building. And make it right up to the road, which is what we look for in traditional development. I think all of, the other thing that really needs to be pointed out is all of the components of this development are really pedestrian oriented. We've got a walkway, which is, is going to be great pedestrian to utilize it. It's going to tie in with the trail. Got an amphitheater, it's a play area, real pedestrian oriented type thing. But the library really isn't pedestrian oriented. It is in a downtown area like this, when you're pedestrian oriented, you have the building right up to the sidewalk and you have an entrance from there. It doesn't mean you can't have a particular activity from the rear, but you always want to make sure you have that entrance that people can walk in from the front of the building. Which is, I think is critical there. And I think this applies to any building that we look at. It's in, at the edge in the transition area into the downtown. If you want to make sure that they are paired along with the road. Because that's, I mean, that's what people are going to see before they see the trail even. Those are going to see the building. It's going to be very important that they are right up there. And already expressed, I already expressed concern in the previous letter about the loop going through the drop-off plan there too. Think that could be relocated to the side of the building with a single drive that would connect to the parking lot in the rear. So I think this is an important angle of discussion and something that I think should be discussed with the elements. But like I said, overall, it's a really good project. And I think the orientation of building and the properties that are included seem to be the key arguments that I'm going to need feedback on before I can actually draft the P U D application for them. So does anybody have any questions about, or talk to the folks from the board?
Didn't you say that the driveway cuts are supposed to be sixty-six feet apart?
Yeah, there's, there's a number of things about that that, you know, for, for the location in particular, there's a number of things of that issues that that raises. Like I said, I'm not a traffic consultant, but if you ran a bio-traffic consultant, it could be issues with that ever. Been long enough to know that it brings the whole situation around there. Like I said, it'd be easy enough to relocate it to the side of the building when you pull the building up. Keep the park at the corner, bring the building up, have one drive come through where you could do the book drop off and so forth. The window right there, wherever you do it. And then just continue that out to the back and actually pace it out the side street, which would be much safer. But if you try to look it up, that's a very busy street.
This, this P U D that we're going after would be site specific for this area only, correct?
Correct. Yeah, any of the properties are included. They've submitted, they've submitted a plan that shows the preliminary plan for the development that they know of right now that they want to build. And if they show the property, you have to show some additional properties that would also be included in that, in the P U D. Which is fine, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to have a plan for every piece of property, especially if you want to complete all of this before you jump over to other properties too. But I think it's important to discuss what, what properties are going to be included in the overall rezoning because they will be covered by the over lane.
I think the just of this P U D is specifically for the library currently because they're short construction help or being processed or whatever. And that's why this was all put together?
Yeah, I'd say it should stem beyond that because what they want to do is, and I can't blame them, when you're looking at a big project like this and you want to build, and you've got all these different components that are interrelated and you want to build them. You don't want to build, you know, one portion of it and then find out, you know, a year or two later when you go to do the next part, that all of a sudden opinions have changed and maybe that folks, maybe it's a totally planned commission or whatever, and folks don't like the way they've done it yet. They've put a lot of time, effort, and money into developing this. So it assures them that they can develop this project as it's depicted on the preliminary plan. So it gives them what they need, you know, to continue to make investments in the property without worrying about a change of opinion over time.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, just a couple of comments. Tom alluded to some concerns that I had with property in it. The city property, of course, would be the southwest corner of Maple and Second. That, the community building development team has an agreement with the city to develop projects basically in an area north of Maple, south of the creek, west of Main Street, and east of the trail. And this is the first that I've seen that they were interested in including that other piece of city property in the P U D. So it's not that I have anything against it, but I think that they have followed a process to get council's approval to include that as part of the P U D. The other is more of a, just more of a housekeeping. Some time ago, the council authorized, for lack of better terms, a land slot with community building development team for property that the city owned on Fifth that would be given to community building development team in return for some that they have on Pine Street. The agreements have been signed, although we haven't done all the legal work that needs to be done. So I just want to make note of that, that, that we have the condition that all the legal work is done to transfer those properties. So those are just the two concerns I have is the legal requirements to transfer those two properties so that that parcel on Fifth can be included in the P U D. And then going to have to have discussion with the city council about that parcel on the southwest corner of Second and Maple. Because this, that had not been discussed about part of the use of city property by community building development.
Chair. That southwest corner of Maple and Second, the reason why that was put in there wasn't that the C B D T necessarily was going to do something with it. Or we, at numerous meetings, I had been talking about putting a parking lot in there. So that was why we was going to include that in with the P U D for whether the city puts it in or somebody else that's still fit with that.
Yeah, I'm just trying, again, I don't have a problem with it being in there as long as it's done correctly. I just don't want anybody to go out on the meeting tonight thinking that they control that property when they, that it has a big size here. That's the only thing.
So the, the property, the one sixteen is the number of the lot? That and one eighty and one, or one twenty-nine, are those all included in the original P U D? The number of the lots, one sixteen, one eighty, and one twenty-nine? It's right above the gate three.
I know there was discussion about one twenty-nine. I'm not familiar with one eighty and one sixteen, are you? That, maybe more like that. I just, I know we talked about the CS main intervention property right there, six main intervention. I know we talked about that, I don't recall, you know, but that doesn't.
At least that one twenty-nine is, is property that's going to be donated to the community building development team. But I see it as my understanding and the one eighty, I believe that's property that they bought for individual.
Once they go to P U D, property that's owned by a company and that's now.
If they have, if they, if that company gives them, you know, the approval to it, or has that, or is that, you got that in writing?
Yeah, that's coming down in December. No reason, it's not a year out of the past right off. Okay, so library or C B D T, whoever would like to go first, share some of your thoughts.
Jesse Merkin, I'm a little off the chart. We met on the twenty-sixth with Jeff and kind of discussed the year involved we're going to include. Kind of at that time, we were looking at just developing our mindset for developing here. The thought was that we had to, it would make sense to add any of the other parcels that we've built for these spaces. So the P U D would create a phase of construction. So at that time, that's where we go, kind of parcel, can you play? And that's probably why Dan become clear about it a little bit later, as we talked about. And I think Carmine could call in on that meeting. Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, me to get up too. So, so when we talked at that time, it was discussed and it made sense to, to Carmine make the job to include all of this into the P U D. And obviously, we're not sure what exactly it would be developed yet, but that will become part of our case. It's like, we're going to be including the P U D. So we need to add some of those, we need to go through some of those, and then get some of those to the city. And then, majority of the other ones I don't really hear, but we do need to include some of those, just to copy the part of this as well. So I just wanted to give you kind of background on how the property is going to include it. Do you have any questions on that?
I just have one. That parcel one twenty-nine, that's current zone I want industrial. And I think that was going into the mix to the P U D, the future change to, change it to the P U D of our street. Because of the stuff they were talking was a lot of, a lot of.
And when we were, when we had that meeting, we talked about, I also do this on, like this. So yeah, as part of the P U D, it's reselling industrial, we're going to include the part of the property.
Is that included on any of those?
I'm not sure if it's on this one, but they are.
I think what all those particles put in the P U D, for purpose of the view in the future, of future.
And Mr. Chairman, they could actually all be zoned P U D, not P U D. They could still be zoned, but not only on their line. The goal is to make them all the same sort of.
Yeah, directly to me as much as well, even though we're putting a P U D overlay on this to go ahead and run the P U D tell, you know, P U D of the city. So I've been seeing your kind of lots of permits here.
Anybody for the library one or one?
Sorry. We do have a meeting to the end of the month for development in San Antonio. And library, I'm going to see if we can, we could have a agreement to allow the library to build. So that, and that's part of the whole contact for it. So we are working on that now.
And Mr. Chairman, when, after the application, if I draft this, since that goes, they will definitely, they'll comment on it for us. The way they want. Actually, I have a question, Jesse. Does exchange proposals in the, what, how is that going to happen and keep us the legitimacy for it to be available?
We worked at the rezine to identify where the hundred year blood point is at. And I've worked with them, actually met with them today. We turned like a container, probably like filled with book claim. And that's showing, I don't know if you had either one. So we are actually going to put together a comment for the entire site to P U D. We're working on that right now. And that will have to finalize obviously when we get it forward.
Do you want comments on the library or? I just got a counter, a couple of permits, things. I'm going back and back. Look, the only thing I had was the, the road cut on Main Street. That is a one-way street, or drive, I should say, for the book drop off. So that is part of the reason they're close. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood why that's done that way. It is a one-way. Any other questions on it?
Have they ever considered about not having that come back out on the Main Street? Because I, I see that, there's a lot of thunderbenders that don't get reported. It's, I just worry that that's going to have a few more accidents turning around right there on that corner. Because you're, you got Oak Street coming on and you're.
Coming before Oak Street.
Right.
Yeah, to make the, make the library work the way we've got it designed to get that book drop off in the work area. That's why this works so well, being on an angle, is that it does fit in really well. And, and it does make the function work so much better within the library. It's, you know, it's, I think it's a real necessity to have it like this. Because otherwise, you're, you know, you're shipping books halfway across the library just to, to do a function that shouldn't take that. And we went through a lot of different plans and layouts to make this work so that it made it much more efficient inside. That's why it, it fits real well, just the way it's set up.
I know there's cuts in the pavement there where, or sidewalk where whatever used to be there had, or was driving through it. I look at it and I think, man, that'd be a traffic cluster. But they used to be light there too, at that corner, right?
No.
Technically me?
Not his time.
Not his time?
Not my lifetime. No, those are all driveway cuts. Everyone has driveway cuts for that. They're all backed out on the Main Street. We're talking a one-way drive-in, drive-out, pretty simple process.
I looked at our master plan and it talked about the studies that were done in Michigan and nationwide. And it, it said that excessive access points make the streets less safe in inviting for pedestrians and bicyclists. And it talked about Cedar Springs had several streets with a number and the location of access points have a noticeable influence on traffic flow. One aspect of the access management is to limit the number of driveways in the operation area of a signalized intersection. In that there's a signal very close to this, these driveways.
Lots to the north.
But you also have the auto sales on the corner. And across the street from this, you have C, oh, the C S, C S turns auto.
This is Main Street.
Well, the, the third component is to reduce conflicts of turning vehicles, ensuring that they're adequately spaced on the other side of the street. And I know, I live on Maple Street and I know how difficult it is to get out onto Main Street. And I, I talked to the sheriff's department and asked them about the traffic study that they did traveling south on Main. And it indicated that the weekday averages, Friday through Wednesday, because Thursday they didn't have a complete day, thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty-nine vehicles. Weekend averages twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-five. And during the library hours, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, they averaged out well over seven hundred a day. I'm really concerned about that with, you know, with the pools park right next to it, the creek. And then the boardwalk, you're going to have a lot of pedestrian traffic. And it's tough to get across that street now, at any time of the day.
I think we're just talking, walking up and down, Main Street's hard to sell, that's the only thing there for pedestrians. Oh, it's two driveway cuts.
Well, people want to get across the street to the park and the library. Because what I'm talking about.
Right, they should do that at the corner.
Go down to the light and cross?
No, 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 corner Maple and Main.
And it's very difficult to get out of there. There are people coming off two drives, one off Main from the auto mechanic and one off Maple. And then with the brewery being in business, and there's going to be a lot more traffic there.
I hope so.
And it seems that if the, the library were turned according to the ordinances and set straight there, then they could have both of the entrance and exit off Maple, which would eliminate the problem with Main Street.
And that's where the main entrance is. The only entrance on that side is strictly a book drop off and employee park and, and delivery.
The entrance makes anyone going north take a left going in there and then trying to get back out on the road on Main. I don't, I don't think that's going to work. And they.
I'm sorry, can I make one other point? Just a note, we're not doing side planning at this point, but the way that the parking lot is configured, it would likely have to, because of the distance from the entry to an actual way, it'd probably have to be a one-way circulation through there. Get it to the, to the parking lot, because otherwise you have, if you're close to one, you know, you'd have people trying to turn left and then people turn right out and you have to come towards. So usually when they're that close, it has to be a one-way route. No, it's not a big deal at this point. It's just that it's conceptual, but just to let them know that we got it.
Something you mentioned that I hadn't heard before. So can you tell me a little bit more about why you want the building this way and what's, what's the advantage you were trying to say there's?
Well, part of it was trying to keep the, the corner open so that you can see the, hopefully the new amphitheater and the, the Lake Pine Trail. You want to make that kind of a focal point in town and hopefully we get a clock tower or something on the corner there. And by putting the building right up, like Tom was talking, it just blocks everything. And it doesn't fit the flow of, by angling that building and being able to get the drop off for the books and everything. But that's been the biggest reason, is between flow, views, and trying to keep things, you know, open.
You said something about improving the flow of the books in the building and stuff like that too. So what's that purpose, I guess?
Well, inside, it's laid out where you have your typical library on one side. And then they have their work, you know, womb, I guess is a good way to put it, is on the other side. And that's tied behind the library main desk and stuff. So back behind there, they can have people working that. As these books come in, they can get them right there in their workroom. Otherwise, you got to put that book drop somewhere off on the other side of the building and try to figure out, you got to part everything across, get it back to the storage room.
This might be a question that's probably served a ton, but how much traffic would that book drop get in typical day? Based upon your, your experience up to this point?
Well, with a new library, they have known that there would be a lot more traffic. I think there are a lot of risks.
I was trying to, I was trying to gauge the impact upon the Main Street traffic. If we just take, you know, if we just take twenty cars going to do there a day, that's different than if we just take five hundred cars going to do there a day. I was trying to figure out what kind of impact that would have on the traffic there.
It's all about trying to make it simple for the community.
Of course, and I, my first impression was that there wouldn't be that often cars going to do there. But I'd be wrong about that, but I was trying to.
Also, well, also, we have Lightline delivers to us twice a week. They would be coming in there about nine o'clock in the morning.
See, that was minimal, obviously. Twice a week is not exactly a traffic error. But I was just curious, just, just how often you anticipated that would get to you as the basic. I don't, I was looking at something with hardware lined up when we were getting on the Main Street.
Oh, yeah.
Because most of the actual traffic to the building, people that would enter the building is coming from that direction.
And now that K D L has their own delivery service and they're not using, but the people have to return their books to get checked in at K D L, at a K D L branch. That was right there with just telling me, um, books that come from the, from the deliveries.
So good, because I think one I think we're trying to weigh is the convenience of the flow to the staff and for everybody else versus, well, safety. So I'm just trying to see what the relative numbers are that are working with that.
Does that mean deliveries are going to come in that driveway, that drop-off driveway?
That's possible.
Okay.
That's all set up again because that's where the room is, where they do their sorting and bring everything, move through it, label it.
So that it be blocked off, that blocks that traffic flow when the deliveries there?
No, no, it's not that big of a traffic. We've got it, when they back up, it's covered. So if it's raining, they don't have to deal with books getting wet and stuff.
Now, that's something that they asked, are we going to build a new library that we have a place like that that's covered? And we haven't, of course, we don't. We had to take it up. This is probably the ten to one that I was trying to come up with.
How many cars would they come in that one box and, but I don't have that now? And test it.
Well, um. So how many books should be in from the? If you could, on Mondays, our drop boxes are almost full. So what that would do through the weekend. And then at the end of each day, it might be fifteen books, it's not a lot.
It's not really.
Yeah, no. There will be, there will be more, of course, only with a new library, but for now.